All right, six o'clock, folks, we're gonna get started. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag is to my left. Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, indivi- individual, liberty, justice for all. Okay, just so everyone is aware, this meeting is being recorded by Norton Media, so everyone can take notice. If you are recording, please let us know. We begin with approval of the meeting minutes from October 27th. Any questions, comments, concerns, or changes to be made?
Nope.
Entertained a motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Warrants, Mrs. Cohen.
I have reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants, October 27th, 2022, $435,938.41. School payroll warrant, October 20th, 2022, $1,102,414.31. I wish to enter them into public record.
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen. Okay, student representative update, San Antonio.
So at the middle school, the middle school is gearing up for their annual Turkey Carnival. The Turkey Carnival is a major fundraiser that supports the mission of the Norton Cultural Pride Miss. NMS Stucow runs this annual event where students can participate in games and activities for a fee. And all of the money raised goes directly to helping our local food pantry, the fundraising and campaign has been going on for at least the past 25 years. The event takes place in school on Tuesday, November 22nd. In addition, we have other activities centered among giving things as part of the run up to the holiday. NMS recently visited by a local motivational speaker, the machine Jesse Green. His visit was made possible by a grant to the Norton Cultural Council. Some of our sixth grade students are looking forward to participating in a Zoom webinar next week with experts from NOAA about shipwrecks and ocean cartography. Some of our seventh graders just participated in a day-long, unit-wide thematic unit based on the novel Peak by Roland Smith. Our eighth grade and foreign language departments held various activities centered around the Mexican holiday known as Dia de los Marcos. And then at the JCS, JCS held its Veterans Day Assembly outside of the flagpole, November 10th, a very simple ceremony to ensure every, even our youngest Lancers, understand the meaning of this important holiday. JCS welcomed about 15 veterans from Norton and among members of JCS families. Thanks to senior Dylan Garapi and sophomore Miles Bresler for coming over to play tabs. Students have been collecting turkey feathers all week as they demonstrate our school's expectations ahead of Thanksgiving. They are doing a great job. And then from the Yale, the kids have been very, very excited to earn 50 hashtag PBIS hashtags, which means them earned books from the Hey PTO vending machine and getting hashtag Good News Call of the Day, which any student can earn for any member in the building at any time for anything from being hashtag respectful, hashtag responsible, or hashtag safe, or having a great week or day, or helping a friend in need, or really anything, they can be nominated and Dr. Biel Fawa?
Well.
Yeah. Or Mr. Gagan gives a call home to the student to tell them they got the Good News Call of the Day, and they get to pick a book from the vending machine and their picture posted on the Twitter and the newsletter. At NHS, we have a bunch of events in the coming weeks that are happening with students. We have Spirit Week next week with dress-up days like Adam Sandler Day and Neon Day. And then we have in-school performance of Almost Made on Friday. Hallway decorating will take place on Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And then Wednesday is the Pepperella Empower football game on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And then semi-formal is coming up on Friday, December 2nd. That's all for.
Great, any questions? Busy.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, opening of municipal remarks. Principal Howard and Mr. Goldstein.
Well, what did it report? We had a good opening to the start of the school year at the middle school. It seems like eternity ago at this point, but we welcomed 567 students and 66 teachers and staff. One of the, I guess, benefits of going this late in the school year, while it seems long ago, is I can report on our fall sports teams. We have four teams compete in the fall season with the Massa Soy League. Cross-country team had another great season. They were coached by Mike Whiteside and NMS teacher Amy Darling. They had 57 athletes come out, but it's a no-cut team, really plays into the middle school philosophy. We get pretty too many people, but we just travel well, I guess. There's just a lot of people, our parents make it to the road games. And we competed with six other teams in the league meet. And then we also played Midway and Foxborough. The girls ended the season with a seven-and-one record, and the boys finished at six-and-two. And in the all-school league meet, we took second in both the boys and the girls. I want to mention Mike Whiteside. He's a Norton resident, had kids come through the system. He started the program in 2015 as a volunteer, didn't take any money, there's nothing, put in tons of work. He's really grown the program. There's so many athletes, when I went back just to verify, was it 2015 that he started this? And I was looking at some of the old rosters, and some really great runners that ran for Norton High School came through his program over the years. And rumor has it that he's retiring and moving on. So I figured I'd take this opportunity to mention his great contribution and really the volunteerism that started the program and got it going. And I remember you started the program too, Mr. Sheen.
I started soccer the year, soccer, baseball, and softball the year before.
Yeah, and so now we move on to soccer. So soccer, this year, the boys team was coached by Tim LaConti. They had six wins and nine losses. They had 19 athletes on the team and only one eighth grader, because some of our athletes played up. So if things go well next year, he's gonna possibly return 18 players to the squad. So the future looks very bright for them. And he did a great job with teamwork. Mr. LaConti is a fantastic addition to our staff and does great. And he actually is holding, he's coaching the girls' basketball team, and their trials began yesterday. So he's on to that. The girls' soccer team was coached by hay teacher, Mrs. Brown. They ended the season with seven wins, three losses, and two ties. Teams scored 25 goals and only had 14 against, and that put them second in the Massa Soy League. Really good seasons all around. And then we had Unified Bachi. So we started our Unified Bachi program last year. I participated in that along with our NMS teacher, Mrs. Sullivan. We had eight student athletes and eight partners do Unified Bachi. We held our first-ever NMS home meet for Bachi. Last year was our first year, so we did all road meets, kind of get the feel of it. And we did two road meets, and they're usually like quad meets, so it's a big group, a big day. And there was a lot, a lot of learning, a lot of teamwork, a lot of friendship that went on, especially through the prior years when we had some difficult times. Last year Unified was a highlight for me, just seeing that program kick off. Next up for Unified is the basketball season, which for them is in March. And it's an awesome program, so we're gonna continue that and grow it even more. And then finally, in addition to that, we had 17 students participate on high school sports teams from our eighth grades, and they usually play a really significant role. And this year, this season, it was football, boys and girls soccer. And we even had some football players leave today for games. The sports, I think with that, and our mission is so much bigger than sports, even though we have some awesome athletes and coaches and fields and stuff now. But I really do think that seeing all these middle school kids pull Lancer jerseys over their chest at 13, 14, 15, really makes them connect. It probably keeps a lot of kids at Norton High School, but I think the program does well, and for our culture and community, it's awesome. Moving past athletics, clubs and activities have greatly expanded. We've got the Lake Bus Pass, which is a great thing. We had 195 students can participate in 14 different clubs. 38 students also participated in morning intermarials. There's overlap with some of these, because some, they might do a club in intermarials. And 17, 72 students participate in Stucow, which is, which is an awesome number for a middle school. Again, 576 kids, we get 72 students participating in Stucow, which is advised by Mr. Goldstein, my partner here. And again, and then NMS Band and Chorus, led by Dr. Bianca and Mrs. Scutcher, is preparing to have the first in-person winter concert in quite a few years. So we're looking forward to that, and that's gonna be December 14th. We also returned another great tradition here, was the NMS Halloween Dance. We had over 300 kids attend that, which was awesome. It's, you know, for many of these kids, you know, kind of a highlight is seeing a kid at their first school dance, and it's like a big deal. Not so much for us, but it's a big deal for them. It went really good. Despite my request, Stay Away to Heaven was not the final song. It sounded like a four-hour rap song. But they had a great time, so 300 kids, awesome time to see that go on. As far as staff goes, we had eight new staff members came to Norton Middle School this year. A lot of them, we had met through, other being daily subs that would come on, or subs that worked through us during COVID. So we kind of had a good interview process with some of these, because I got to see them for a while in, you know, different roles or non-permanent roles. And they're all doing a great job. We'll mention them quickly. Mr. Jamison Hay, grade six, ELA. Mr. Cullen Murphy, a paraprofessional in our GRIP program. Mr. Andrew Sembolisti, grade seven, science. Mike Fiore, a paraprofessional in our VES program. Joe Wood, who's a long-term sub for us right now, doing art, doing a fantastic job. Mrs. Ann Nitlin just joined us for a recent retirement. Mrs. Diogio, I don't know, she's a paraprofessional, she's good. She was a student teacher down at the hay this past year, so got a great recommendation from Mr. Gagan, and he was right, she's doing a great job for us. And then we were able to hire a daily sub, which has been tremendous for us, getting that daily sub, Meredith Maggie. So those are our new staff members. For our staff, we're working on, we've adopted a new thing this year, e-Hall Pass, which Mr. Goldstein oversaw, something from the high schools, so the staff and students adopted that pretty quickly. We continue with our PBIS initiative, that got slowed a little bit because of COVID. But myself and six other staff members from the middle school are going to the conference on November 18th, and we hope to get our school-wide, you know, acknowledgement and recognition system back up and running again, that we kind of had going right before COVID. So we're gonna take a big step with that. We continue with Swiss and our IMTSS initiative as a staff-wide thing that we've been working on. And our 30-minute after-school extra help time, which began in October, I see every day that late bus is getting filled up with kids. And as part of our thing, we write like, where were you? So someone calls, and typically it's our club, Jerome Club, Rube's Club, extra help, extra help, extra help, that bus is packed. You will see it driving around Norton probably at six at night, but for good reason, we have a lot of kids taking advantage of that. Not that teachers definitely help kids prior to this, but I think parents having the schedule to go by and the certainty of the schedule and removing that, I gotta ask for extra help and just knowing that it's there and it's by schedule. I've seen a huge increase in the numbers over the past about three weeks since we got, really got that going. So that's it in a nutshell. Any questions?
It's nice to see the middle school kind of back up and at it, you know, with everything you guys have going on. I feel like, you know, with sports and stuff out through COVID, it's nice to see everything coming back. It's always one of our strong schools here, so it's nice to hear all of this that's going on. The only request I have is you add hockey.
Oh, hockey.
Your mathies are hockey players.
I know, I know.
We have three middle school teams now.
Yep.
Yeah, so it's, the program is definitely growing, so.
I'll have to get in tune with the update. When does, when does that season end?
March, but it starts September, but it goes until March. So it's really a whole.
It doesn't end.
It's a whole school year.
I'll check back with the mid-season updates.
Well, you know, while you're doing the update with the whole school.
Sure.
I'll say this to you again next year, I'll be like, right off the bat, I'll be like, where's hockey?
I'll do better next year. The week before.
Yeah, I'll do better.
I'm teasing.
So for the Halloween dance, I would say the eighth graders, that's probably their first Halloween dance, right?
Yeah, Halloween dance, yeah. Yep, there will be, there's a lot of firsts for this eighth grade class that will be coming on board and coming back.
It's crazy.
So we returned a good amount last year. We aggressively tried to pull out of COVID, even with returning all students like a month before we were required to. So we've always been trying to get back as quick as possible. So, but there are still a few firsts left to have.
I think the kids last year still were nervous too, right? That everything was gonna get pulled back on them. I think this is probably the first full year where they're, they're feeling much better. Well, hopefully, our students are feeling much better.
And we have like our, every, every other day, there's a wear of color. Today was red, white, and blue, and we had different things. But we're getting great involvement in those things. So we noticed before, when, you know, prior to two years, people kind of retreated to what they felt comfortable with. And we noticed participation way up in those things, whether it's waiting to support breast cancer, or whatever the different things are, that we're noticing just a lot of involvement. And those things usually don't result in anything, no prizes, no nothing, just hey, we're gonna do it because we're doing it. Sometimes those signal more of a connection to the school and that they're listening to announcements than anything.
That's nice. Are you going to start your interview show again?
Yeah, I was actually talking, actually, Mr. Hay, one of the people who works, the TV people over here, so, yeah, we think we might start that up again.
I think you should.
Yeah, that was fun.
I'll forget that.
And I know you're not thinking ahead to the spring, but we can't forget.
Oh, I am.
Well, but theater here in the middle school is just so awesome for the productions they put on, so we can't forget to kind of give them a little shout-out.
Yeah, they, they actually start in December, so it was unknown, but that work starts all the way in December. They have the first introductory meeting, and then the big announcement, what will the show be? And then, and then it starts up. So, yeah, December is gonna be that couple stuff. If I didn't even include that, if I throw those numbers in, that adds, you know, we've had years that added 100 kids between the cast and everyone.
And I think what's amazing about that, obviously with COVID, I think that that was a real disappointment, but it does, it brings in about 100 kids. I used to come and help a little bit, and it was amazing how those kids just performed. And so, shout-out to your staff who really pulled that off.
Yeah, and we, we did, we did the show last year with creative, but with that, and you know as much or more than anyone, we, that show went off really well, but it had no, like, no veterans, like everyone was new, our eighth graders were new. And now we've built in some experience, so, you know, really looking forward to see what Mr. Beard and Mrs. Pollak could do with the show this year.
Yeah, they're amazing, so.
It's a great middle school.
Yes, thank you guys. Thank you.
Great to work.
Any other questions?
Thanks, guys, very much.
Thanks, guys. All right, next item is field trips. Dr. Baer. Excellence Awards before that. Sorry, I had to check it off. Yep, I had to check it off. Sorry. Student Excellence Awards.
Let me do my favorite thing.
Oh, there mine too. See, I was so excited, I checked it off when we got there.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, the members of the committee of the public that's here today. First of all, I'm here, as I am every year, to present four outstanding awards to seniors in this, this year, the class of 2023. I want to start by thanking the families that are here today for raising great kids, and to my staff and educators for supporting them throughout their career in the Norton Public Schools. The four awards that are presented today are the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Award, which is a, my association that I belong to as a superintendent. And the idea behind this award is to provide, in this case, one graduate senior who distinguishes themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school career, has a high rank in the class, and a cumulative average GPA that is significant, as well as well-rounded student. The second award for this evening is the Superintendent's Award of Excellence. It's given to a high school student who has distinguished himself in the pursuit of excellence during their high school career. And then the final two are the National School Development Council, which is an award presented to high school seniors who have consistently pursued a high level of academic effort and who have also served as positive role models for the student body. And recipients of the award exemplify admirable character and accomplishments. So these are four pretty significant ways to recognize four of our best students in Norton. So tonight, I'd like to start, and I do have a short bio for each, so I don't want to embarrass them, but it's always nice to read and help them and then share that as well. So tonight, the first award is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Certificate of Academic Excellence. Throughout her time in high school, she has maintained an exemplary academic record. Through her determination and dedication, she has earned her spot at the top of her class. She has maintained high honors and has been recognized for her academic achievements. She is proud member of five honor societies, and even holds a leadership position in one of them. These academic accolades are a true testament to her academic efforts, and she is excited to take the next step in her education, and is excited to explore computer science or engineering. She's been involved in the softball program for many years, both on a club team and here at Norton High. Through the sport, she has gained leadership skills and has been recognized as a TBL All-Star, Sub Chronicle All-Star, and an NHS team and offensive MVP. She has coached younger athletes throughout the years within the town and her club team, and she sees herself continuing to coach. She's hoping to play softball in college, and will certainly be an asset to her school both in and out of the classroom. This year's Mass Association of School Superintendent Certificate of Excellence goes to Sandra Ferber.
Got it.
Come on up, family.
This is one of those pictures you had.
I can share them.
We'll have us four together, and then we'll do just three.
Got it. Oh, you went into the kids tomorrow, is that?
Congratulations. Thank you. The next award is the Superintendent's Award of Excellence. This young lady has consistently been dedicated to her academics while balancing her extracurriculars and has maintained a fantastic performance in her classes. Her enthusiasm for learning is apparent, and she's towards a top of her class of 2023. She's the type of student who goes above and beyond graduation requirements. She has taken seven science courses and has even shadowed a physician's assistant on her own time, which only solidified her interest in this career path. She is a member of six honor societies, be on the board of two of them, and is also involved in DECA and the Environmental Club. She's been involved in dance for 16 years and has enjoyed teaching dance to pre-K students in addition to her part-time job. She's been able to fully commit to her academic interests with all of her other responsibilities and will surely find success in her future undergraduate program. The Superintendent's Award of Excellence this year goes to Julia Hank. Sorry.
Got it.
Awesome. Family? Come on up. We'll send the pictures to the students too, so congratulations.
Got it.
Congratulations. The National School Development Council Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning Award is going to two students this evening. He's in the process of completing a highly rigorous program and has taken a multitude of honors in AP classes. He's been able to maintain a 4.6 GPA and also a member of the History, English, Science, and National Honor Societies. He is also the president of the History Honor Society. He was 2022 recipient of the Presidential Award for Computer Science. He showed his drive and academic excellence when he decides to take the AP Calculus BC exam and to work outside of school to learn the additional material, because Norton doesn't offer the AP Calculus AP, only offers the AP Calculus AP. Teachers and the IT department describe him as intelligent, dedicated, driven, responsible, mature, and thoughtful. In addition to his academic achievements, he has two, he is a two-time captain of the cross-country team and one-time captain of the indoor track and field and outdoor track teams. He's a member of DECA and the MPS Technology Team. He also placed eighth at the state DECA competition in March of 2022 for an innovation plan project. The National School Development Council Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning Award goes to Tyler Bruman. Congratulations. Family? I know one of the family members for the, we have a history. Yeah. We have some black nights in us. That's good, that's good.
Got it. Got it.
Last but not least, this evening. Not only is Brooke Dennett a standout student, she is also one of the most recognizable leaders at Norton High School. She has an outstanding academic record and has dedicated her time towards being involved in the school community. She is a member of multiple honor societies and holds leadership positions in three of them. Brooke is also the president of the class of 2023 and is vice president of DECA. Through her thorough of leadership, of paternity, she has gained experiences running meetings, organizing fundraisers, and planning events. She is also a three-season athlete and a varsity runner on both the track and cross-country teams. She's excited to study physical therapy, hoping to combine her academic interests with her athletic experience. Brooke has surely become a staple of her college environment when she gets there, and she'll be, make a mark while she's there and in and outside of the classroom as well. This evening, I'd like to recognize the National School Development Council Academic Growth and Student Leadership Award to Ms. Brooke Dennett. And we have a connection for mom and dad.
Got it.
Congratulations. Let me just thank all of those involved in moving these students forward for my consideration. And I just want to say, proud of you, thank you for choosing Norton High School, and you have many options. Thank you to the families for supporting them and us, and congratulations, and can't wait to celebrate you even more, relatively early here. Congratulations to the families and to you folks.
Congratulations, everyone. Like Dr. Baer said, it's for us, for me, it's great when we celebrate our students. If we could do that every meeting, that would just be a great set of meetings. With that, congratulations to all of you. We hope you do great things. So the next item upon the agenda is now to approve the field trips. Yeah, you guys feel free to go.
Yes, we are not offended.
Nice job, guys.
Congratulations, all.
See you. Bye.
Mr. Chairman, I have two field trip requests that are both out of state. As written, the visual arts field trip, Ms. Lewicki, our art teacher and academic coordinator in the fine arts, is taking students to the art museum in December at, excuse me, at the Rhode Island School of Design. And our high school, excuse me, music teacher, Mike Knurr, is doing a recording arts field trip to Smithville, Rhode Island, on December 8th as well. Because these are both out of state, by state statute, it requires your approval. Without your approval, they can't go.
And they have secured transportation.
Yeah, yeah. And as you can see, the, the cost is also noted as no cost, so I recommend that you consider voting a positive.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
All right, entertained a motion to approve the two field trips as written to Rhode Island.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Four zero. We will not have the next item because the Parks and Rec Department cannot be here tonight, so we'll move to the next item, which is Superintendent's Goals for 22 through 24.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, I'm on a two-year cycle, under the state statute for certification for superintendents. I must present my goals to you and have them approved by you. The student learning goal is all about Division 2026. That will be moved to the December meeting solely because of the reprinting that's taken. That will be moved to the December meeting solely because of the reprinting that's taking place and some of the changes. And I will provide you written updates on the entire plan and where we stand in March and then again in June. That's a little bit of a change from the past where I've done it like once a year, but I kind of feel like there's a lot that we have on the table there. And I'd like to be able to say to you, yes, we're moving in the right direction, or no, we're falling behind, or we haven't been able to get there. The professional practice is part of the handout that I've given you. We are going to be starting learning walks by building in conjunction with central office administrators and building level administrators. The learning walks are based upon collecting individual data, but only, but not, I should say, collecting whole data from the building, from classrooms that we visit, and then looking at that whole data to see, are we doing great things here? How can we improve there? So you'll see that the focus, there'll be a learning focus for the learning walks. This will be shared with the teachers, by the way. Once we start learning walks, they can have it, do whatever they want. What did you see? What did I hear? What are we wondering about? And then the section that actually requires some decision-making is how are the teachers structuring questions at high levels, using appropriate wait time, using strategies to extend student thinking? And those are very yes, no type of things. And again, then what we'll do is collect all of that. And then one of the new things we want to do is after we collect a few months of it, we want to share it district-wide. Then we just want to share it in that building so that people can have, hopefully, some conversations about what's being seen. The last part about it is probably one of the most important parts, or the part three of it, is this also allows for the administration to really calibrate what we should be looking for when things get to the idea of administrator observation and administrator evaluation, so that we're all looking for the same type of things. And so if I go in and I evaluate Mr. so-and-so or Mrs. so-and-so, that person should be saying the same types of comments as if it was one of my principals or another administrator. So that's the idea behind collecting the data in learning walks. It is not tracked by individual. There's no names on this. As you can see, it's date, time, grade, or content. And even then, most of the time, what we will write is things like ninth grade and so on, especially if we have a smaller situation or like the middle school team. We wouldn't say a purple team or, or white team. We would just say eighth grade. So, because the idea is to collect the data and learn from it. And then I'll report back to you on that as well. And then the last one is really the biggest thing that we have undergoing in the district, as you know, and that's the integrated multi-tiered system of support, which is really trying to get at the route of why is, why is a student struggling? And how do we support that? And how do we bring teachers together? I have to tell you, it's going straightforward. It's going well. There are areas where we have to do better, but that's part of, if you will, as I always say to you folks, it's part of this game that we are part of in education. You know, there's never a completed. It's always constant trying to improve. And we're also really proud that we are having some real discussions and conversations at the high school level. And IMTSS at the high school level is one of the hardest things to do. When you are at the elementary level, you might say, hey, I'm gonna have the student work with the interventionist. When you get to the high school, that's, you don't have interventionists, right? So you have to bring teachers together and come up with situations where we can respond. And this is called integrated because this might be about a student's behavior. Might be about their attendance and not just their academic output or their struggles that they're having. So we've started to create this, as you know, and you'll see that we also really are going to try to target your support in the budget process. What are we seeing that we need in order to be able to actually say we're doing it successful? And that requires potential financial support, as you know, through either positions or more resources or another late bus or whatever it may be. So you'll see some of that when we get to the budget process. It does require your vote, and I will update you regularly on the superintendent's goals on a regular basis.
So I have one question, one request. I'll go with the request first. Do you have the literature on the IMTSS?
Yes.
I know we've heard about it on a couple meetings, but can you just send that out? I know I would like to see it, I don't know what the rest of the committee would.
Yeah, it's part of our, it's part of our Vision 2026 presentation to you in December. Is we're really, we're gonna take a look at that IMTSS and really say to you folks, this is what it's like. So yes, but we'll get some, maybe I can try to get you some pre-literature to take a look at.
The second part, and maybe, maybe I missed it. When we talk about the learning walks, who, who is participating? I assume it's your admin team, but are we also going to maybe take and maybe send like principals to another building? Like is it that?
So that's one of the outcomes. So one of the things that you do when you're doing learning walks is you say, hey, Mr. Donaldman, we're gonna send you to the middle school. Hey, Mr. Hayward, we're gonna send you to the YEL. Hey, Mr. Gagin, you're gonna go to the high school today. Hey, et cetera. So the idea is that so that they can see, I mean, at the end of the day, I'm always going to believe that teaching is teaching is teaching. It's all about the best practices and the mastery of the teacher. That's what it comes down to. And I, you know, we can look at all the other issues that go with that, but a master teacher is a master teacher. So the idea here is to have us really work together as a team and say, when you leave, for example, one of our third-grade classrooms at two elementary schools and you go to a fourth-grade classroom in another building, then it isn't all of a sudden this complete change of expectations and best practices in the classroom. And I think that's an area that is really difficult at times for us because we have a lot of changes in grades compared to a lot of districts have more of that, you know, K to five building or one to five. We have that change. So yes, that will be part of it as well. And it's, one of the things we try to do is we try to hit five or six classrooms for 10 minutes. And then after about an hour of that, an hour and 10 minutes of that with the, in the hallway, you know, moving around, we deep, we're gonna debrief in the conference room, just us that partook, and just say, what did we see? And then one of the things I really, really want to do this year that we haven't done is I want to share it out with the teachers because I think our teachers are gonna find that it will support morale, that it will support that we're doing really good things. And maybe even excite a teacher to say, you know, I am gonna try that. I've never tried that, and last time I tried, it didn't go well. I'm gonna have to go back and do it again. Or they may want to, you know, send an email to their colleagues and say, hey, I saw the learning data outcomes from the learning walks. Who did the piece on blah, blah, blah? I'd love to come and see your classroom. No administrator involved, no evaluation involved at that stage. It's all about that professionalism of allowing teachers to work with teachers.
So with, with this program, and I like it, I like the idea, but where it's kind of semi-anonymous, how do we avoid going like to the same classes?
So, so we will, we will, yeah. So the principal will be in charge of saying, well, we're gonna take a look at, you know, this department only. We're gonna look at the social studies department at the high school. Now, I'm not a big fan of that. I prefer to go into multiple, I'd rather go just down a hallway.
Yeah.
Because the idea is to also share with teachers, what are the kids doing for 60 minutes? Then they have a three minute, then they have another 60 minutes, then they have, are they doing the same thing? Or are they actually getting variety of instruction?
Yeah.
You know, which is, I mean, harder to do at the secondary level at times than it is with the training that an elementary teacher gets, for example.
Yeah, because that would be my concern. Like, like I can just envision like the classroom right across from the principal's office getting, you know, every time they're gonna be.
Right, no. We, and not only that, sometimes we, the principal will have, hey, we're, we're gonna go see these five classrooms and three people are absent. Well, we're not gonna go see a substitute. So we just, we pivot and go to the next thing. I know that like, one of the things that's really important is also to see different content and different things that are going on at the same time. And then different grade levels in a building that's like nine to 12. You know, just seeing freshmen is, you know, probably something we don't want to do. But we will go into electric classes, not just the core classes.
Yeah.
You know, we will go into the wellness classes. We will go into the fine arts classes. You know, it's not just gonna be the math class, the English class, the science class. We will try to, you know, bring in that experience of what the kids are saying, kids are doing. We're also having some internal discussions about shadowing students. You know, like I'll shadow a high school student for the day, or I'll shadow, or I'll go work, like I used to pre-COVID, go work with, usually, I can only do a half a day with pre-K or K because I'm dead by election 11 o'clock. I don't know how our staff does it.
When he first started, Principal Gagin shadowed my youngest daughter.
Yeah.
Met her at the bus stop.
Yep.
Was the whole day.
Yeah, so we've had, we've had a lot of discussions about how we haven't really done any of that in the last few years because of this thing we're under.
Yeah.
We want to go back to doing some of these things that are, right now, the biggest thing that's keeping us from doing some of that is just finding the substitutes. So when a teacher is out, it's not the principal doing it, you know? And that's hard. That's just been hard. And we're just starting, as you saw from the numbers that I gave you the other day about attendance in, to Nick, your comment about the attendance at the middle school because it was Election Day, and then we just went back. And I gave you the attendance for just the middle school, and as you saw, the numbers were pretty consistent. But what we have district-wide is like that particular data for that particular day, the lowest attendance in the district was 89% attendance, and it was at the LG, which is not a school that we usually have that type of attendance. Well, it's sickness, right? It's just, you know, I'm not even calling it COVID anymore because it's all kinds of stuff that's happening. So it kind of backs to the normalcy of what we used to have, right? We didn't track it. It's this disease, that we just think people are sick, so.
Any other questions on this?
Yeah, just for the learning walks, like I just, what, when I think of goals, I kind of think of like measurable. What's the goal to, how many, who's, you know, how many, like are you doing one? Is the principal doing, you know?
No, no. So we will work as a team. So we will go in, we will invest probably one of two ways. If, for example, the administrators have, and this is scheduled from my office to the administrators, starts, of course, with the collaboration of the principal because that's the most important person I need in the building. So then we got Jen, Vinnie, Casey, Karen, those four. If they're available, we could have six of us, and we'll split up into two teams of three. And now we'll hit 10 classrooms, not five classrooms. And we'll have more data. So that's the idea, is to collect the more data. We'll do it probably from now until I would say that February, March. And then what we'll do is we'll take that data at that time and say, okay, what's the goal now? Now that we've seen some of this stuff, how many should we be doing on a regular basis? What areas are we now gonna target? And then what is the outcomes of the focus areas? Our focus areas are all around everything to do with IMTSS, which is really about best practices in the classroom. So I think what you will see, as I report out to the school committee, is somewhere, I would like to get into that 50 to 75 range, K to 12, and then say to you, okay, now that we've observed this, my, my goal is now to say, for every 90 days of school, we want to do 60 of these, 40 of these. Whatever that number is, that, that gives us not only raw data, but data that we can actually look at and have a conversation about. I think, I think you'll be surprised, Nick, that we will probably attempt this year to do more than we've ever done just because we're also coming out of the last two years of different, different situations. And then lastly, the biggest part for me then becomes after we collect this data, what are we gonna do for, for year two? What does it really mean in year two? Is it more learning walks? Or did we do enough learning walks and we want to move to some strategic attention in areas of need, desire, want? And that, that should include teacher input? Because they might say, you know, when we looked at the data, it was seeing what you're seeing, and therefore we want more professional development in this area. Or we, we think we need, we need to bring in an expert to really help us with numeracy and mathematics or whatever the, the area may be. Hope that helps.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that? All right, entertaining motion to approve the Superintendent's Goals as presented.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I bring this to the end of the post on the agenda? Do we have any other topics?
I have no other topics except I'd like to thank the veterans in celebration of Veterans Day today, tomorrow. And especially, we'd like to recognize our Norton veterans that we and the school department have a really good relationship with. And please join me tomorrow as I will be here in town for the veterans' celebration.
10:00 AM parade?
10:00 AM at the YEL, and then they parade out, and then they come back. And it looks like the weather's gonna hold off, at least for that morning.
Yeah. I was thinking about that.
Realized it, no school tomorrow.
All right. No other business, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.